July ninth, Chilton County Commission. Mr. Johnson, we appreciate those words and that prayer. Thank you. I understand. Thank you. So I'm gonna call our meeting to order, and I'd like to ask the Commissioners if they've had an opportunity to review the agenda. And I will make one note, before we have a resolution to approve it, we need to remove Shannon Hamilton. Is there any other additions and deletions to the agenda that you guys know of before we approve the agenda? Do I have a resolution to our motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Have we had an opportunity to review the minutes of the June twenty-fifth meeting? And if so, could I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I make a motion, we approve the minutes for June the twenty-fifth.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Do I have a, could I get a motion to approve the claims of July ninth?
I make a motion, we pay the bills, July the ninth.
Second.
You got it, Jimmy.
We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay, at this point, we need to open a public hearing. Uh, I guess I need to entertain a motion to open a public hearing for the Worthy Food Mart alcohol license.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
We voted on a license here.
Public, yes.
I, I was staying, I mean, I vote no on the license.
We didn't vote on the license. We're voting on the here.
Okay, here. Alright.
You good with that?
Yes, sir.
Just for the here?
Okay.
Okay, so now is the opportunity for public comments for the alcohol license for Worthy Food Mart? Is there anyone to speak in, in support or opposition of us approving our portion of that alcohol license?
I'm probably worried that no one. Good evening.
Good evening.
Anyone has any questions?
Do we have any opposition? Can I get a resolution from anyone to approve our portion of that alcohol licensing process?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
All opposed.
Let the record reflect that Commissioner Harvey opposes. Motion carries. Can we move on to the public comments section? Ms. Maddox?
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are y'all today?
Great, how are you?
And I'm sorry, I'm giving you something last minute here, I wanted you to have our current status. How many we have in our program? Thank you for last year. There we go. We can house up to eighty, and when I say house, that's in our county, we're allowed to have, um, up to eighty prisoners in the, in the community for community corrections. And we have fluctuated between sixty-five and seventy-two, and we're steady at sixty-eight over the last two quarters. Also, um, you can also see here, escapees within, um, for the county, there's only three. One of those is in Georgia, we don't know exactly where, but the other two are somewhere in Alabama. So it's not a lot of escapees. Um, we typically have people that were around the grandmothers in North Alabama, and eventually family will tell us. So it's not really a danger to our community, and none of these people are. They're people who have gotten in trouble for trafficking or something that's not, um, a human danger like, uh, any sex crimes or any serious violence to anyone else. And that's currently who we're working with, is mostly the drug trafficking. I think someone, and I believe you asked me last year, how many have we actually seen change? And I said one, because that very day, I was probably as down and disappointed as I've ever been with the number of people that continue to use, but I also have court referral side of things. And that's what was on my mind, not the community corrections. We have, um, to date, in this past year, forty that have been a success, who have EOS'd. Um, they're working good jobs, some are out of state. We have one in Anniston that actually brought his son that he's never had custody of, and his father who started him on drugs into the Anniston area, and they're all there. So I consider that one a big success of three off of drugs. But community corrections is successful. You prob, uh, we have somewhere around sixteen percent that are not. They come back through a second time, and usually the second time, they, they realize this is not state probation. This is prison in the community, in your, your county. The county borders is, um, is your prison walls. Also included on here, where you could see that every year, we have to include for DOC, we have a year-end report, is what it's called, and an accountants' report of what applying agreed-upon procedures, which is state law for Department of Corrections. And I'm happy to report, we have been in compliance with no issues for the last three years. Prior to that, it was just misunderstanding in, in how to apply some laws, but we have no financial issues. And I'm not asking you for any money, all I want is a resolution to continue operating community corrections within Chilton County's borders.
Okay. So we need a, uh, resolution for that.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion or any more questions for Ms. Maddox? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Have a good evening.
Alright. So we're on to department reports, and Mr. Calhoun, Judge Calhoun?
Yes.
You're up first.
Good evening, thank y'all for allowing me to be on the agenda. I'll be brief. I'm here to just give an update on the special election that we're having. It's in full swing, and our candidates are working hard to earn everybody's vote. I'm excited about the election, it's my first election process, and so I'm excited to see who wins. We have five candidates that are running, that qualified. I had one individual called me today and said that they would like to run for the position as well, maybe as an independent, but that time has come and gone. July sixth was the last day for anybody to qualify as an independent. It's forty-five days from election, if I'm not mistaken. So, and I have not heard anything from the Secretary of State on that. If I'm wrong, correct me on that, okay? But as far as I know, we have our five candidates, and we'll move forward from there in the primary. I did wanna tell you that on August the thirteenth at six PM, we'll have our poll workers class. It'll be in the large courthouse or courtroom upstairs. Everybody is welcome to come. Our candidates will be, uh, receiving a notice of this as well, and they'll be invited and encouraged to come. On August the fourteenth at twelve PM is when we'll be doing our testing of the voting machines. So we'll have a representative from ESNS, they are responsible for helping run the election process for us. And they'll be there to do their thing, and all of our candidates, the, uh, the press will be there as well. So, uh, these notices will be coming out, I just wanted to go ahead and let you guys know that, uh, to be looking forward, looking out for it, so. Um, that's really all we have, all I have, uh, is there any questions from anybody? Did I? I have nothing, yeah.
Anybody have any questions?
Everything seems to be moving right along, so.
Thanks for the update, Joe.
Yeah, yeah. So if I can be of any assistance to anybody, please, you know where I am. I would like to mention, I'm enjoying the air conditioning, I apologize for not wearing my jacket, but I hadn't had it on all day, it's been about eighty-two in the probate office, so if we can figure out how to pipe some of it upstairs, we would greatly appreciate it.
And then a lot of other officers are struggling, I was gonna ask Tony about that.
Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. Alright, on to the Sheriff's Department. Gerald, are you gonna be handling?
Ready?
Yes, sir, floor's yours.
We got four reclass, uh, reclassifications, uh, basically moving four employees from part-time to full-time. Their names will be Jacob Borden, Mason Manley, Adam Geisler, and Waverly Powers. I'm asking for a resolution to...
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
And to replace their positions from part-time to full-time, we've got five new hires as part-time. Zachary Williams, Lucinda Martin, James Harper, Kenneth Ray, and Jeremy Nash.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion?
Gerald, here it says, Jeremy Nash is full-time, he is actually part-time.
Uh-oh.
I just wanna, for the, for the record...
I might've jumped ahead of myself on something here.
I'm gonna get your paperwork right.
The Commission done pointed out where I had some paperwork wrong the other day. That's it, he's part-time now.
He's part-time, okay.
So he's part of the reclass, I had him in the wrong list.
Okay.
I cheated.
I just wanna make sure it's right.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Dan, floor's yours, Dan Wright, nine-one-one director.
Uh, I would like to, uh, request a resolution, uh, to negotiate and enter to an agreement for land use on the land on Airport Road behind DHR for the construction of a nine-one-one facility.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion?
Just wanna make sure that everybody knows that this is at no cost to the taxpayer?
That's correct.
Or additional cost, this is...
Right, right, no, no cost to the County Commission. The nine-one-one district will be financing and funding the, the project.
The roads or whatever in...
The, the entrance roads, any security fits, and all, all improvements to the complex. That's not yet a complex, but, uh...
Outta your dime.
Right.
Okay.
That work.
And the security, the security portion of that is through a grant, so we got a grant for security.
Good deal.
Okay. Any more questions?
Do we need to set forth now the land use agreement, or we worked that out?
Well, I, I think we're gonna need to get some, a, a detail of exactly what part of that land, and we'll put that in an agreement, and you bring it back to us, and we'll approve it and go from there.
We'll give it to our attorney and let him look at it, so, yeah.
Two weeks, won't hurt you with it.
No, 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 no.
Make sure we get everything.
That's how many you...
Y'all, get his number, work with him.
Do you know if you wanna do a, a lease back on this, which would have to be a financeable lease, or they can't get, get us to pay the gas, or do you wanna carve out a parcel and convey it, convey title?
Convey a title like we usually do, don't you think?
What, what Dan had proposed is that we did a lease where, at the end of the usefulness of the building, that the building would come back to the county.
Yeah.
And if we convey title of the property to them, then that's not so easily done, is it?
Well, you can do it with a simple reversion, kind of wrapped in the deed to, it, it reverts back to the county. We've done that several occasions, it could be a reversion in the deed itself.
Okay.
Um, just need to get some consideration to the useful life of the building and condition. You could be receiving the building back, do you really want it?
Hmm.
It could be dilapidated, run down, and, and, you may be giving back a, a, a building you don't want, so...
We need to have, we need to have some kind of clause in it where they have to update it, keep it updated every so many years. Some kind of, we'll get it back.
Where would you place it, Sylvia, Jordan?
Oh, here we go.
It's a twenty-four-seven building, it'll be, it'll be kept up. I understand his concern, but...
I like the question is, do you want it back at the end or not?
Well, that's no different than us getting the, the DHR building back in the shape it's in right now.
Well, that's right, did you have to find something to do with it?
That's right.
Well, when we say, when we say useful life of the building...
We won't be worried about that. I won't be worried about that.
I won't be here, so...
When we say useful life of the building, so the plan is a thirty-year building, that, that's what we're building for. It's to hope to get thirty years, you know, we, we can't plan for thirty years, there's no possible way. But, uh, the nine-one-one district is, is saying thirty years, give or take. And the reason we say useful life of the building is because with so many technological changes in nine-one-one and things that we can't even see yet, you know, things may happen in fifteen years where it ju, it just doesn't make sense to remodel that building for what our use is, so...
I would suggest, over that long a period, rather than trying to do leases, to do it as a deed with a reversion clause.
That's right. I mean, we just, we just, we just don't, we donate them the land to build the building on, because, like you said, once, once it's, they decide to move somewhere, the building, building, land, and all comes back to us.
That's the way I would like it. We move forward with that.
Y'all work that out, let us know which direction to go. It's, it's, it's being built with, you know, basically the land, the building, everything's gonna be built with taxpayers' money. In the, in the long run.
Anything else, we're gonna vote? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, man.
We'll follow the work we got.
Ms. Sylvia, do you wanna handle the Gerald portion under Gerald's name?
Uh, yes, I'd like to request a resolution for permission to post the position of Park Ranger for Higgins Ferry Park.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Alright, um, Whitney, I see you came in, but you're not on the agenda, do you have anything that we missed? Okay.
Free food tickets.
Alright, so that, if I'm not overlooking anyone, that takes care of the department reports. Uh, now's the time, if y'all see that I've overlooked something, to point it out to me. Uh, but we'll move into the Commission reports, and, uh, we'll start off with Commissioner Maams.
We've, uh, we've gotta finish up the CDBG grant, uh, paperwork to get a, a resolution to finish this out. Uh, I'm just gonna read the resolution that Stacy has presented to us. Uh, it says, whereas the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs is accepting applications from municipal governments for program year twenty-nineteen community development block grant funds made available through the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. And whereas the Chilton County Commission has identified community development needs and determined that there's a critical need to pave dirt roads in an area where high concentration of low to moderate income persons reside. And whereas if the grant is funded, the Chilton County Highway Department will provide two-hundred-sixty thousand dollars of in-kind matching contributions of equipment, labor, and materials. Now therefore, it be resolved that Chilton County Commission authorizes the submission of a grant application to a DECA requesting three-hundred-fifty thousand in, uh, PY two-thousand-nineteen CDBG county funds. And be it further resolved that the County Commission authorize the Chairman to sign all required grant application documents on behalf of the county, approved on this ninth, the day of July twenty-nineteen.
Do we have a proposed motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion?
Out of, I'd just like to say, out of this two-hundred-sixty thousand dollar in-kind matching contributions, the majority of this thing is, is gonna be equipment that we already have, and it's gonna be labor that we already have.
Right.
So very little material is involved in this. I, I wanna say it's, uh, material is roughly eighty thousand dollars to get four-point-one miles of roads. So it's, it's money well spent, so it's a good deal.
Thank you, Matt.
No doubt. Alright, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Alright, Commissioner Caton?
Uh, I, well, I don't have anything, 'cause we're gonna carry mine over and into a, a work session.
Well, let, let's take this time and you just request a work session.
Okay, alright, I'd like to request a work session to go over, uh, roads and bridges in this county, to come up with a plan, uh, possibly talk about the plan that I have submitted or other plans that may be submitted at that night.
Okay. Does anybody have any, let's see, we've, we've got the, uh, on the calendar, we've got proposed, uh, meetings on our off Tuesdays, right?
Yes, our next official meeting this month, that was the thirty...
Twenty-third.
It's thirty. Thirty, yeah.
Yeah, it was an odd one.
And if the paper sees fit, please make sure you mention in the paper that the Commission meeting is not gonna be on the normal day for the second meeting of the month. But, um, Alan, you said you were gonna be on the week of the twenty-first. What about the week of the twenty-third, is there any issue there? Yeah, I'm, I'm first of all, you won't be back the first of October, so this, can we roll into August? Yeah.
Tony just needs something, y'all.
What about August the sixth?
What about, and let me ask you this, what about the twenty-ninth, the night before? We have a meeting on the thirtieth.
You said, you said you wouldn't be back.
I wanna be here for that one.
You won't be back till Wednesday.
First of all.
You're leaving Wednesday. You're leaving the fifteenth, so what about the fifteenth?
We have an IDB public hearing that night.
We got three though.
Um, yeah, that is true.
We got three, you got fifteenth, sixteenth, and this, and then eighth, twenty, twenty-fifth? I'm trying, I've got two, I'm out of three.
Do you think it'll hurt your process if the Commissioners are not there on the first night?
So I think... What crowd? Oh. Well, the fifteenth is, uh, probably the only date we got to make sure we get this planned. What time is the fourth, the sixth, the sixth? Man, is it possible? Is it possible to pick the fifteenth? Oh, well, that's, that's a question, looks like we'll be in IDB going.
Well, of course, and I know this isn't the, the easiest thing, but of course, and Tony has to have in, does not reflect the sales tax. And that doesn't mean he doesn't need some input from us on what we're gonna do with the gas tax.
Well, what, um, and, and I know Matt said something about fifty-one, but he could, he could submit, he could submit fifty-one and thirty-seven, you know, for that first year plan. If, you know, I, I asked him about that, if something, if he, if we got into a tight, and he said he could submit those two roads for his first year plan. And, and not, you know, if, if need to, or, or another, definitely need to submit thirty-seven, 'cause we've already started working on thirty-seven.
Well, I, I, I still, with Matt, the whole fifty-one, we, we, we need to get more pressing road than fifty-one. We've got one in the fifty-one already paved, and the other end, and not saying nothing about anybody that lives on fifty-one, but we need to get the pressing roads that we can get done, you know what I mean?
And we got thirty-seven falling apart all the way through the county, and that's just one example.
That's right, we got twenty-nine out here just falling apart from Isabella to thirty-one. You know, that's a heavy travel road there, you know, so...
I mean, he could, he's, he can come up with a row, um, you know, we could, you know, we could give him a, we could give him some leadway.
Can we do it on August sixth or fifth?
Tony said he was gonna get back with us on the day he had to have that submitted.
And he could come back on the thirtieth, he could, he could submit a plan just for one year. He could submit that to us on the thirtieth, and we could, or the twenty, yeah, the, uh, next meeting's thirtieth. He could submit that to us on the thirtieth, and he'd have some plan, he'd have time.
Let's, let's refer August the sixth.
Yeah.
I won't be back the third, I wanna be here for that.
I think this is important, if we all need to be able to participate.
Now, August sixth is not...
August the sixth.
It's not our meet.
We've got it posted already at six PM, right?
We got a meeting on the thirteenth.
Okay. You good with that, Alan?
Yeah.
What time? Six PM, 'cause it's already posted in our, in our year. So we won't need a resolution or anything, because that meeting has already been approved, we're gonna approve, we approved our meeting dates this beginning of the year.
August sixth, okay. At six.
You ready, Commissioner Horn?
Yes, I'm, I'm, we was talking about the, the DHR building that's fixing to be, uh, uh, at the end of the year available, and what to do with it, we've been, had several discussions about this, and I'd like to ask the Commission for a resolution to grant the DHR building to the Sheriff's Office, to the EMA, and to the, um, also include the coroner in this. I actually text the coroner and asked, would he be okay with that, and he said he would be delighted to be out there, and we, uh, um, Gerald spoke on behalf of the sheriff, and he said he didn't have a problem with it, which is also gonna go with our complex that we're trying to...
I don't, I'm not speaking for the sheriff.
Okay.
I didn't say if he had a problem with it.
Okay. Well, back that up, edit that part. The sheriff will know when he sees this video tomorrow, so, nah. But, just joking, um, but we have, I've talked to the sheriff on several occasions about the building and EMA, we all have. And, um, the coroner does need a, a place for, to identify for office something that's presentable.
A little more security.
Yeah, and, uh, the coroner also is gonna, uh, be bringing us a presentation for a new cooler to, for, uh, that he has a plan for, uh, this person. I don't know what his plan is, but he has a good plan for it, I think, Alan, you talked a little bit about it, so. Uh, just to make, we're, we're trying to make this a complex, like a, uh, public...
Multi-purpose.
Multi-purpose complex, uh, between that, you got the rescue out there, you got the DHR, I mean, the, uh, nine-one-ones, you just heard us earlier, talking about nine-one-one being out there, so. It's a great plan, and, uh, but we need to move on this because of budget, and I think that we're gonna be surprised that there's grants that's gonna be issued for this building, for the, uh, construction of it, and would probably cost the cat, um, the, the taxpayers of Chilton County a minimum to, 'cause there's gonna be decent work done out there, we, we know that. And plus, we also gonna get a bonus here, I feel like, this Commission is because there gonna be a multi-purpose room built out there for we can, so we can have actually meetings when Whitney brings someone in to, to talk with us about potentially coming here and doing business, or, uh, the Commission has someone, we wanna do interviews or whatever, and we need that, 'cause we do not have that as we currently speak. So that's why I'm asking for the Commission.
And I believe Gerald just came in here.
Yes, so that, thank you, Sheriff, that, so that, he is good with the corners, so, that's my question.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Alright, excuse me. Commissioner Langston?
I would like to propose a resolution to give our administrator authority to restructure three existing accounts with Riverbank Trust at an interest rate of two-point-five-five. And the account of Chilton County Hospital Trust, excess bids and tax sales, savings account.
Second. We have a motion in a second, um, floor's open for discussion and comment.
Can I add one thing?
Please.
Uh, our contact person is either Darren or Steve Nims. Ms. Sylvia?
Okay, one thing that Commissioner Langston asked in our work session that we point out to the public, and this would be a perfect time for that, is these accounts are pretty much for funds that, that are having to be held for reasons like the excess bids, those are tax sales, and we have to hold those for a period of time for redemption. And what we're gonna do, instead of those monies being held in non-interest-bearing accounts, is to put them in interest-bearing accounts, and so the net on these three accounts would be a twenty-one thousand, six hundred dollar per year interest earnings for the county by restructuring the way these monies are being held. Any more comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, and Mr. Langston, thank you for your due diligence and what you've done with this. Um, just for the public, the, the, cumulatively, the restructuring of our accounts is going to add a hundred and six thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars per year in interest income. And Commissioner Langston is solely responsible for, for putting the legwork into getting this done.
I appreciate you guys letting me do this.
It's great that you've taken the time to take on that responsibility. Alright, we'll move on to the Administrator reports.
Uh, request a resolution to, uh, pay J and J Properties. This is an excess bid that falls between the greater than three and less than ten years. Uh, all the paperwork is in our order.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Next, I would request a resolution for line item transfers. There, uh, would be, uh, a transfer from repairs and maintenance in, uh, building, road, and bridge, excuse me, um, and out to the Sheriff's Department. excuse me, and out to the sheriff's department to cover inmate medical, cleaning supplies, repair and maintenance for building and land.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, public com, or comments from any of you guys, any questions concerned?
This'll cover the inmate medical through July?
Through July.
Yes, it will.
We're still at zero in our line items for those for the remaining two months of the year.
Will this money be put back in building, road and bridge?
From, no.
No.
These are money that were, monies that were put in those line items that had not been spent. What you did was go through the budget and look for... It's not gonna be spending and trying to cheer up the sheriff's budget without borrowing money. We're probably still gonna get to that point before the end of the year, but this is just moving things internally right now. Any other comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All opposed.
Let the record reflect that Commissioner Headley opposes. Motion carries.
That's all I have.
All right. Guys, if you'll notice, in our old business, we still have the Chilton County Policy and Procedures Manual, it is still under review. We'll be prepared as soon as that's released from our attorney and, and his group of attorneys to take action on that. Ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Can I give a quick update? Uh, the, you know, we approved to do the ceilings in the, in the tag office, that work will be started this weekend, we'll get, we'll get it framed up this weekend, and we're gonna do the, the lighting system in-house, Pete is gonna do the lighting, so we'll save money on that, and we'll get the lighting done next week, and then they'll come back the next weekend and lay it in, so we'll be through with the lighting and, and tag office in the next two weeks.
Good, great, Alan. All in favor of adjournings signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'm sorry, I can't.
I made a motion, Steve second.